Lynn, can you hear me okay?
I sure can.
Okay, great. Are you still just seeing? Oh, I guess now you can see the entire council. So, thank you very much for joining us. My name is Mark Segrist. I'm the Chair of the Cumberland Town Council. First off, thank you very much for putting together such a detailed report with great information for us to consider. I guess I'll start by maybe, I know there were quite a few questions that came through from folks of the council. Does anyone have an immediate question that maybe they would like to jump out and ask Sweet about the information that's been given? No? Okay, I guess maybe I'll start off.
So, you don't want us to do our presentation?
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know there was a formal presentation first. Let's please go ahead with that. That would be great. Thank you.
Terrific. I just want to say how happy we are to work with you on this. I'm Lynn Sweet. I'm the managing member of LDS Consulting Group. I'm joined by my colleague Liz Shaput, who is an associate here and did most of the work. So, can everybody see my screen?
No.
No, not currently. It might be on our end. Just one second.
Can anyone else online see it? Liz, can you see it?
I can see it, yeah. Sure.
It might be on the town of Cumberland. It shows up under Town of Cumberland.
Yeah, we've got our AV team coming to the rescue. There we go.
Can you join on Zoom on that?
Yeah, why don't I sign in? I'll do that.
Lynn, if you don't mind, just one second. We're actually, well, I guess you could probably go ahead. Bill, is that okay? Okay. So, Lynn, go ahead. We can see your screen. We're just going to add it as another visual here while you present. So, please go ahead.
Terrific. Thank you. So, I'm going to run through it really quickly, just so that everyone has a little bit of background on how we approached this and how we came up with our model and what our conclusions are. And then, we're absolutely here to answer any questions that you have. So, basically, when we're doing a market study, we need to create some sort of a model. And for lack of anything else, we were told that the town was interested in doing potentially two rental buildings, one age-restricted and one without an age restriction of approximately 55 units each. And so, that's really what we used as an assumption. We're not telling you that that's what you should build, but we wanted to start with something. And then, given our background in affordable housing, we assumed that when you're doing an affordable housing development, a handful of the units tend to come with Section 8 vouchers that the state awards to you, and that there will be multiple tiers of incomes at the 50%, 60%, and middle-market, if you will, 100 and 120, and market-rate units. So, we just did a broad brush stroke to try and see at all of those different income levels what the demand for housing was. And so, and that came out of a plan that was provided to us as part of the due diligence. I don't know whether you've seen it or not, but the potential of having a couple of units around a town green, we probably would recommend that you actually have the units in the middle and the parking on the outside, but that's probably a conversation for another day. And so, the first thing that we found is that there is demand for mixed-income rental housing, more so for families than for seniors in Cumberland in the study area. We studied Cumberland and several of the surrounding towns, so that we could get a sense of supply and rental pricing outside of Cumberland, as well as what supply existed inside of Cumberland. And so, what do all these charts that we put into the study mean, and how do we go about it? We have something called HISTA data, and that is something that we buy. It is based on census and other types of data, and they take that data and they create reports for us, so that we can look at income by household size. So, for one person, two person, three person, so on, up to a six-person household, as well as by age, as well as by tenure, are they renters or are they owners? So, we have access to data that's not readily out there in the public realm, and that's how we do our demand analysis, if you will. So, we looked at basically all households in either Cumberland or within our study area, and we looked at income levels of households earning between 40 and 60% of the area median and 80 and 120% of the area median income in the market rate. And we took the total number of households and we subtracted out any type of competition that we might have found in our research. And then, we came up with the number of households that were income-qualified by number of people in the household, less competition. So, that's the number of households that are out there. And we divided that number by the model that we used. So, for example, if we were looking at 10 units at 60% of AMI, we divided those 10 units into the number of households. And that's how we came up with these capture rates. We did it for family and we did it for senior, and we did it at these different income levels. So, the study area is much, much broader. For units at 40 to 60% of AMI, they really want to see a capture rate below 10%. So, for the greater study area, there was an abundance of households, family households. Within Cumberland itself, very few households met this criteria, not an acceptable capture rate. For 80 to 120% of AMI, we really look for capture rates at 5%. So, again, for the greater study area, plenty of households. For Cumberland, you know, somewhat borderline. And that's really just a reflection of the fact of the people that are living there today. Today, they don't make income in those brackets. And so, for the market-rate housing, again, the greater study area, plenty of supply within Cumberland, you know, well above. And I just want to confirm with my staff member here, with Elizabeth, when you did the capture rate for the market-rate rental housing, did you combine, did you have that only be for rental households, or did you include all households?
Just a moment.
I just want to make sure that we didn't miss something here, because obviously, you only have a handful of units, so therefore, that's probably why the rental capture rate is so high.
It's also there's more competition. That's where Cumberland Foreside Village falls, and so, that kind of impacts the capture rate, I think.
Okay, but was it all households, or was it just renter households?
Just a moment. All households.
Okay, so this is all households?
Renter, all age groups, sorry. Renter households.
Renters, all age groups. So, that, this, this number could be a little bit inflated, in the sense that somebody who is now a homeowner may become a renter, if the right kind of housing is there. So, we'll, we're going to, we're going to look at this chart one more time, and we may come back with a little bit of a revision. So, for the senior housing, we did pretty much the same thing, whereas the age-restricted, same thing, that the 40 to 60%, what's considered very low income, the capture rates are not acceptable. However, interestingly enough, for the middle-market, that 80 to 120, and that market rate for seniors, there seemed to be a need, meaning that there were households available that could afford middle-income rental housing and market-rate rental housing. In addition, we talked to property managers at the income-restricted households outside of Cumberland. They tended to have very long waitlists and constrained supply. The one senior project in town, Village Green, has been having trouble renting their units. And that's just because it's really hard to find somebody earning 40 to 60% of area median income that is over 55 or over 62, and that has enough money to pay the rent. And so, they were finding that people are coming in and they're making too much money or they're making too little money. So, Village Green has struggled, and that makes us nervous about recommending any more affordable at the 50 to 60% for seniors. Some of the other family affordable developments said that there are a lot of people that are coming in that are over income, and that means that basically, they're making more than that 60% of AMI, but they're making too little to be able to afford a market-rate unit. So, again, that, that middle-market, that 80 to 120% of AMI, is looking for housing that doesn't exist for them today. You know, generally, when, when we look at projects, we assume that not everybody is going to be living in town. They might be coming back to town because their parents live there, or they may be parents of people that are living in town that they're coming back to. So, therefore, that's why we had a very broad recommendation, that you really need to try and reach out to households at all different sizes and all different income levels. And so, our next conclusion was that it's, it's most likely that the lack of households is more a factor of not having the right type of housing product, rather than lack of demand for those affordable units. So, hopefully, that makes sense. You can't count a household if they're not in town. And if there's not the housing choice that they're looking for, they're not going to come to town. So, I think the whole idea of why you're doing this exercise is you're trying to accommodate, you know, people that may not already be in, within, within the community. And so, we did learn in talking to Cumberland Foreside, that many of their residents are single-parent households that established a household in Cumberland and wanted to stay. So, basically, one spouse gets the house, the other gets a rental unit. We also know that there was concern about school-aged children, and we did get some statistics for town, that I'm sure the town manager can go into a little bit more, that is basically showing that the percentages of households with school-aged children has actually been declining, which is very common, because right now, people are having smaller, smaller, they're waiting longer to get married, and they're having smaller, fewer, fewer children, so that household sizes are getting smaller. We were really impressed with Cumberland Foreside, that they have such high occupancy and really no turnover, meaning the units aren't being turned every year at the rate that they tend to turn. You would expect in a rental community to turn 30 to 60% of your units in any given year. That is not happening. People are really enjoying living in a rental unit in Cumberland. And overall, not, again, not a surprise, only 16.5% of your units in Cumberland are rental. So, the other thing is that there hasn't been any multifamily housing built in the last five years. So, all of these bullets really just lead to constrained supply, rather than lack of demand. The next conclusion is that, basically, we feel that there does need to be a different housing type that is going to cater to young adults and perhaps older, older people. They also don't, a lot of older, older people don't necessarily want to live in something that's age-restricted as well. You know, they, they don't want to be surrounded necessarily by their peers. They want to, you know, maybe find something that's going to get rid of their home maintenance, but not necessarily, you know, something that's, I will say, active, more active. And so, you know, we suggested that there be a mix of elevator buildings, so that people that have accessibility issues can get to the elevators, and that families might be interested in townhouses as well, and perhaps, you know, larger, larger households. Also, a lot of what we're seeing, and some of this is driven from culture, and some of it is driven from economics, is that we are really seeing that sandwich, sandwich household, where you have both children, you have both your children and your parents living in the home, you know, or you may even have a parent living in the home, and you might need to have, you know, a caregiver. So, just because we're suggesting larger households, I don't think we're suggesting that we're going to be importing a lot of children. I think we're going to try to rightsize something, so that people who have needs can have those, those needs met. And, you know, I think that we're just seeing at that one developing town, Village Green, that, that the limitations on their property are really why they're, they're not full. We also found, in the surrounding communities, a lot of age-restricted affordable housing that was in the pipeline, so we think there's going to be some competition for that. And as we've discussed, Village Green having trouble maintaining occupancy and maintaining Conclusion number four, we do think that you should be able to get the maximum rents for both the affordable units and the, the market-rate and middle-income units, if you're not putting an age restriction on that, because it does seem like the competition is able to achieve that. And as we discussed, Village Green is not, and we think it's just too small a box. The next one is, we just suggested that for market-rate units, what the rental rate might look like, 1,700 to 1,800 for a one-bedroom, 2,300 for a two, and 3,000 for a three-bedroom market-rate unit. And so, we just provided, well, how did, how did we get there? We really looked at the competition, older competition and newer competition, to come up with what those averages might look like. And we adjusted the utilities, just so that we're matching apples to apples, so that everybody is paying, you know, presumably paying base rent, and that if somebody is paying, you know, if, if you're paying for water and sewer, then that's, you know, everyone has the same utilities that they're paying for. And so, that's the one-bedroom, the two-bedroom, and the three-bedroom. It's hard to know if these rents are going to cover the cost to build something right now. Construction costs are pretty high. Interest rates are pretty high. So, we tried to just do a synopsis, trying to think of what your questions might be to us, as to why we modeled, what we modeled, and how we came to our conclusions, and we're here to answer any questions you have.
Great. Well, thank you very much for that, that overview. That was very helpful. Bill, would now be the time to kind of open it up to the council for questions?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyone with an immediate question for Lynn? Go ahead.
This is just my first one, but we'll, we'll get to them as we go. Is there any, any thought process on going out to RFP specifically, just to affordability? I'm not talking about any particular age right now or income level, but leaving market-rate out of it completely. Is there an opportunity that we might be able to encourage a developer to come in and say, yes, I can do X, Y, and Z for a certain criteria of affordable housing, and not have a market portion or piece in that?
I think you could definitely do a typical low-income housing tax credit project, that's typically around 40 units, that is limited to 50, you know, that 50 to 60% of AMI, and get those units filled. I think that if you want to reach a broader audience, you could do another 10 or 20 units and try and hit that middle-market or that market rate. Either way, without an age restriction, there is the, basically, a demand for anything that you can do, you know, rental, rental right now. Yeah. But I think that, you know, my concern, again, is about the construction costs and whether or not, and I don't, you know, availability of funding at the state. If you add a couple of other levels of income, you might be able to get to the finish line faster and, and serve more people.
Yes, please.
I'd be interested in any thoughts you have on infrastructure, or lack thereof, in the town of Cumberland, as related to affordable in general, thinking about transportation, like, we don't have any public transportation, so that might be a deterrent for someone to move to Cumberland, as opposed to Portland, or South Portland, or even Westbrook. Any thoughts on that, or are there social services besides transportation?
I think it's, I think it's a really, I think it's a really good point, that, that somebody would need to have a car to live in this community, assuming that there isn't a council on aging, that has, you know, vans that are going to take somebody, you know, around, or some other type of, of ride service. It's, it's a consideration. I think that, you know, the motivating factor may be that, that Cumberland is a desirable community, that there's a lot of open space, that you can provide amenities, such as, you know, a community room, potentially, you know, a fitness room, and so that, that might be attractive to some lower-income people, to, to be in a community that, that has, you know, more, as you, as you will, more fresh air than some of the communities. The other thing is that if, you know, the social service agencies most likely do have wraparound services, so just because somebody's living in Portland doesn't mean that they're not going to be able to get, if somebody's living in Cumberland, may be able to get those services, you know, from Portland. But most, I think people also don't really necessarily understand what low-income housing is. Typically, somebody who's living in a Lytec project either needs to have a voucher, or they need to have a job. And so, really, what, you know, you're finding that, you know, your teachers, your landscapers, your, you know, service workers are the people that are looking to live in that housing, because they have to pay rent. It's not subsidized housing, meaning all of the units are, you pay a third of your income towards rent. It is self, self-pay affordable housing, and therefore, you typically need to have a means to have that income, because the government isn't paying for it.
I had a question for you. So, in terms of, can you kind of expand a little bit more on how those capture rates are calculated? And I think one of the things that we're, we're thinking about here is, obviously, within the bounds of the law, how do we build something that will benefit Cumberland residents the most? I understand that, from an affordable housing standpoint, you can't discriminate based on where someone's from, which I think is a good thing, but it sounds to me like, I don't know if it's a fair assessment, but the takeaway would be that there is demand for affordable housing in the town, but it just wasn't within the range that we initially thought, at that, like, maybe 50 to 60 range, but that, maybe that 80 to 120, it makes more sense? But if you could just go expand on that a little bit, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah. It's a really interesting question. So, in Massachusetts, and I don't know if you can do this, in Maine, we have something here when some, that, that allows the state to say that you can have a local preference, and we do lotteries in, in Massachusetts for affordable units. So, perhaps through your permitting process, if it's allowed, you could say, well, we're going to do a 70% local preference for anyone who lives in Cumberland, works in Cumberland, or has a child in the school system in Cumberland. So, that could, that would give them first shot. So, people that have a local preference can go into the local preference pool, and then they can also go into the general pool. So, they kind of get two shots at it, one for 70% of the units, and the other for the 30% of the units. So, I don't really know how Maine works compared to Massachusetts, but that could solve your problem.
Got it. Okay, that's, that's really helpful to know. That's something we should look into.
Yeah, yeah. We call it down here a local preference, and the state here will allow up to 70%. And it's, as I said, living, working, or child in school system.
So, does, does that capture rate help indicate whether there would be a demand for local residents to go towards that particular property? So, if the capture rate is too high, does that tell you that no one from Cumberland would be applying for that, but rather if all those individuals are coming from the surrounding areas?
No, no. Yeah, I just want to bring up the demand analysis, and I suspect that Liz is going to get to it quicker than I am. No, it's just that, so, for the 40 to 60% Cumberland, let me just look at Cumberland. So, for example, today, there are, projected in 2028, 72 qualified households, is, you know, for example. So, there are, there definitely are households there, but, you know, if you're trying to these 30 units, that's almost half of those households. So, if we were doing a market study for somebody, we would include the surrounding communities, because otherwise, it wouldn't get financed. But you could, you know, say, well, we want a 50% local preference. And if you can't fill it with people locally, you, they will come from, you know, outside the area, and they'll, they'll all be, like, in the general pool. So, there are, for the 60 to 80%, it looks like there were, wow, 23, that went down a lot. 80 to 100, there were about 144. So, there are definitely households, you know, that are qualified. There's just not a lot of them, and more of them are making market rate than are making affordable. And it's because you don't have the product.
Got it.
So, does that answer your question well enough?
Yes, it does. And I think Counselor Wilson has a question.
I do. Thank you. And thank you for this study. It's incredible data. So, one of kind of the buckets of statistics that was really eye-opening for me is that in terms of current, current rental units within Cumberland currently, so 16 and a half percent of the units are renter occupied, and 22% of those are rent-burdened, and 19% are severely rent-burdened. And if I have this right, so to be rent-burdened, that means 30% of your income is spent on housing, and to be considered severely rent-burdened, you're spending 50% of your rent or more on housing. Is that correct?
Yeah, it is.
So, with, so what I'm trying to kind of reconcile is...
They're voluntarily doing it, you know? That, they, they need somewhere to rent, and, yeah, it's, it's tough. It means that they only have, for example, 50% of their income left to pay for food and for, you know, transportation and everything else. Yeah.
So, within, so there, if 16 and a half percent, what I'm trying to reconcile is the need as well, based on the people that are currently renting in Cumberland, and whether or not this type of project would offset, and how we can plan for making sure that we're in the right buckets of AMI, to make sure that the people that are currently living in here, who are severely rent-burdened, were addressing those needs. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I don't know that we can determine who is rent-burdened in, in town, and, you know, we can say is that of renters, this percent are rent-burdened, and this percent is severely rent-burdened, but we don't have, our data doesn't drill into household by household. And that's why we do our demand analysis, so that we do look at households and at, at income. So, our demand analysis, which is more broadly written into the report, shows how many households at each income level could qualify to live in, in, in your housing today, but we can't, we can't leap from the whose rent burden versus what level of income they're at, unfortunately.
Counselors, did you have a question?
Yeah. I'm just kind of interested why you brought in, on your analysis, the communities that you used, two of them, I think Cumberland's got a good relationship, as far as we, we're closer to them, one being Falmouth, one being Yarmouth, but I'm not really sure why you brought in Westbrook, Gray, Wyndham, which we really have nothing in common with, as far as our average income. They have a lot of rentals in those communities. I'm not, why was the comparison not down with, say, Yarmouth, Falmouth, Cape, York? Towns of similar populations and similar average income and so on?
Yeah. So, good question. So, we basically tried to take the communities that I believe we're touching, we're touching Cumberland, because we wanted to actually get that diversity and find, and find properties, just looking for supply. Trying to find rental supply in your area is very difficult, so we wanted to make sure that we at least identified some supply. So, that's why we, we chose those, even though I understand that there are different socioeconomic factors. We just wanted to see what people were getting for rents and what their occupancies were, and we wanted to see whether or not there were, there was a diversity in, in income. I... I think that we might have in certain instances called out, you know, income by, you know, by community for you. But these areas, I think, were more likely that people were going to travel to Cumberland. For example, you know, we really didn't believe that somebody's going to come from Portland necessarily to Cumberland because Portland has a lot of rental housing today.
And just go along with what Tig asked you earlier was, I guess, who are we trying to attract here? We are, are we trying to attract people from away? Or are we trying to take care of a couple of the citizens that are here and are already on some kind of senior waiting list? And I noticed in your recommendations, you said no age restrictions on an entire building, which for me, we've had pending here a waiting list to get into our senior housing for years. And it's always been around a hundred plus citizens already in town. Why?
Is that for public housing, for subsidized housing?
No, no.
Tell me about that waitlist.
Our senior projects that we have are existing here in Cumberland. We have a waiting list to get on. And what is the list now, Bill?
It's about a hundred and twenty.
About a hundred and twenty of our residents are trying to get in.
Into what?
Thirty thirty units of townhouse units at the end of, right next to the middle school. Those are not income restricted. Those are age restricted to fifty five. They were built about thirty, thirty five years ago, so.
Are they ownership or rental?
They're all rentals. Town owned.
So, okay, so you have a townhouse rental project that seniors are waiting for that is market rate, right?
It's probably closer to eighty percent. I'd say the average rate there is, Carla, thirteen, fourteen, thirteen hundred a month right now.
So that sort of is exactly what we said to you is that you need something between affordable and market for seniors. So that, and I I'm sorry that we didn't study that. I wish we hadn't known about that. We certainly would have included it in our-
It's in there. It's just too funky, I think, with the side to make it a cop. But we can, we can look at it again and put it in a better location compared to it better. But.
Yeah, so so that's exactly what we're saying is that these people aren't low income, but they're not able to afford market. And that's why you have a hundred and twenty units waiting there, waiting list.
Okay, I guess that's my concern.
People want a townhouse because they have more space in private city.
My concern is your recommendation that said no senior, no age restriction on one of the buildings. Where we have a, we have a known, we have a known problem of a hundred and twenty of our Cumberland citizens waiting to get into below market rentals. Yet your recommendation says no age restriction. I guess that's.
Our recommendation is no fifty and sixty percent age restriction. So we're saying that you need that, that there is opportunity for middle income in in market rate. So we'll take a look at that and see if.
Bill, can you confirm, are those existing residents or?
Those are people that qualify. There's kind of a internal local preference added to that. We have different categories of when you slide up the list. Those people have been on the list for a long time.
Sorry, so I'm not following. So are they residents?
Some, most of them are. Some are people that have moved away and moved back but or in the area and want to get back into Cumberland.
Okay.
They have relatives in Cumberland. There's like two or three different lists. And Carla, our executive director of housing, she basically and Christina Silberman, her assistant, have updated that list, have kept it consistent. And as a unit comes open, the next person in line gets the call. And if they're not ready to move, we go to the next person and the next person. So.
I think it'd be helpful to understand what those real numbers are so we're not just like running off one twenty. You know what I mean, like?
No, they're not all one twenty. There are some age, there are some income, lower income housing units that were grandfathered.
Yep.
When Drown Road was built, we basically took the half a dozen low income restricted rents and moved them to Drown Road because of the Lytec funding that went with that. So we have phased out the lower income units and tried to get toward the, I'll say, the nine hundred to twelve hundred dollar range. And most of them are very close to that now, majority of them, I'd say.
Did you have a question?
I do have a question. So we we have data from a 2020 GP Cog survey that tracked as Cumberland has grown, eighty eight percent of new jobs were filled by people who live outside of town and are commuting primarily from Wyndham, Portland, and Scarborough. And kind of one of the conclusions we came to were many of those people who actually work in Cumberland can't afford to actually live in Cumberland. And so I was just curious if those findings, if there is any updates to that type of data or if that's pretty consistent to the larger themes kind of within this report.
We didn't, we didn't specifically look at that on the US Census. We may be able to do that. It basically, well, there's two things. It shows, we may be able to dig up some census data that shows how many people are working in Cumberland but not living in Cumberland. I don't know for sure, but we can try and see if we can dig that out.
Thanks.
Yeah, but that doesn't surprise me at all that, that, you know, you have a lot of beautiful homes and you have a need for services. And you don't have housing that that people that are providing those services can afford to live in.
Go ahead, Shirley.
I just wanted to point out that Table thirteen and Table fourteen on page twenty four have different numbers of units in their tables. One has us with twenty nine fifty units and one has us at thirty fifty eight units. And I'm not sure which ones.
What page are you on?
Twenty four.
Okay, one second.
Table thirteen.
Apologize, I just came back from vacation today. I don't have everything memorized.
That's a lot to memorize.
Okay, so Table fifteen and sixteen?
No, thirteen and fourteen.
So let's just see, thirteen has occupied housing units, owner occupied renter for Cumberland. And fourteen has age of housing stock. Two seventeen, two twenty one. Total housing units, three zero five eight. I do not have an answer for you. We can take, we can take a look at it. It's very interesting that you're right. One of them says two nine five zero and one of them says three zero five eight. That is about seventy difference.
While you're looking at that, I went through this report pretty carefully. And one of the things I noticed is that, you know, thirteen percent of households in Cumberland earn less than fifty thousand dollars a year. That's three hundred and eighty five households. Eleven hundred and twenty two households are under a hundred thousand. That's thirty eight percent of our households. That would make almost all of them at some level qualified for affordable housing. My question to you is, if I'm a senior in a house that's paid for, why would I move into a two bedroom apartment and pay twenty three hundred dollars a month?
Because you don't want to have to worry about mowing the lawn. You don't want to have to worry about a leak. You want someone else to take care of the maintenance. You want maybe to have neighbors, companionship, amenities like a fitness center and mailroom and things like that. I think that that is, you know, a choice for for somebody that that they no longer want to be a homeowner. They want to spend six months a year in a warmer climate and have to worry about their house while they're gone. And then they spend their, you know, their summer still in Cumberland, which which they love. So I don't have an answer for you.
Okay, I guess where I'm going with that is, well, I, that's really not for you. It's for us as a council to talk about.
There you go. You you made a statement that you thought most, most of the households would qualify. And I think that, you know, the problem is that Table seventeen households by increments doesn't have number of persons per household. So I think that not as many households qualify as as low income as you think they do. Just when you dig down into household sizes.
Can you, can you address, I've always thought about this question of like, if there is a household that technically qualifies for affordable housing. But how do you, I guess what I'm struggling with is, you know, if we say, how do we identify the individuals within Cumberland to the best of our ability? Is there a way to drill down into a household and say, okay, well, what if one individual in that household has just been staying there for six months or a year until they can find their own place or get their own job to be able to to afford to live here? Do you ever see that instance where it's almost like the moment that the product is put on the market, you see folks from within the community leaving those homes where they technically didn't qualify as a as a unit? But then once they go out on their own, they would qualify for one of those individual units. Do you see that?
Interesting. Yeah, I mean, there's definitely people that, you know, couch surf, if you will. They go home to live with mom and dad for a little while. You, if you're applying for an apartment, yeah, you would be applying on your own as an individual. So you might not be counted. I mean, is there a way to drill down into this more? Potentially, there could be local census data. I don't, I don't know how detailed your local census is. If you can look at that by age and by household size and by income and by address. You know, there's some data that we buy, Melissa data, that we could drill down into, try and figure out, you know, who are those rent burdened households in in town? Since we know the addresses of what the, you know, the renters are. But we just don't know if the renters have responded to the census. So that's potentially, you know, another avenue to go into.
It strikes me as a little bit of like a balancing test, right? You want to have open enough of a process and an RFP that the developers will bid on it. It'll make financial sense for them so they move forward. But you also don't want it so open that the entire world is invited to come move into your town. You want to make sure that you're targeting kind of that sweet spot of what's the AMI level that we go after for the, for folks in Cumberland. And that local preference rule you talked about was really interesting. I think that's something we should look at.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you're, you know, if you're thinking of developing an RFP, you certainly want to give some basic minimum requirements for a developer and then let them come back to you because they're going to know the financing programs that are available in Maine. I haven't done a deal there in a while, I'll be honest with you. So they're going to know what they can get financed and they're going to, you know, probably come to us and say, are there bodies to fill it, you know, kind of thing, or or somebody else. So, you know, if this is leading to an RFP, I would, you know, highly recommend that you try and put some basic minimum requirements and then leave the rest open to the developer.
Great.
That's a good question.
Yeah, and I guess with your experience, whether it's in Maine or Massachusetts or wherever, are there like certain things that we should be on the lookout for? Kind of like a top ten, don't do this thing when you move forward with a developer? That we should just big, big red flag issues that we should be focused on?
I mean, I think that, and it's so interesting right now. I'm working on an RFP for Harvard in Brighton, Austin here. And we've, we've done this minimum and then we have sort of like, we have ten scoring criteria. To me, the biggest thing is to make sure that they are financially sound and that they've got experience and this isn't their first project out of the gate. So you may, again, have, and if you're a municipality, you really should have scoring criteria. I think we might have picked ten different things. And, you know, they go kind of like satisfactory, unsatisfactory, you know, whatever, excellent, you know, kind of thing. So within each each score, we have like four choices that you can sort of check off. But experience and, you know, that they've got the ability to get to the finish line, meaning that they've got very strong financials. And and you can have them submit their financials not, so the financials aren't public, but so that, but that somebody can review them. That's what we, you know, because, you know, or you're going to, you know, want to get a letter from, you know, a bank or letters of interest from other lending sources, kind of thing. So if that's helpful, we're happy to look at it and add our two cents.
Any other questions from the council? Please, go ahead.
Yeah, my question is related to some of the information on page twenty three. And I'm concerned about people's ability to pay their taxes, whether they, if they're a homeowner here in town. And you indicated that nearly all growth was from fif, ages fifteen to thirty four and fifty five plus from 2010 to 2022. In your twenty to twenty two to 2027, you show a decline of ten percent for school age residents and eighteen percent increase in sixty five and older. And here's, Bob, your, your twelve year wonder, a ten percent decline in the people forty five to sixty four theoretically.
Wait a minute, are you on, are you on table twelve?
Page twenty three on ours.
Second chart.
So I had to take some of the numbers out and then divide them by.
Right, because I'm looking at table twelve and I'm not seeing any of the numbers that you're talking about.
No, because you don't have them. I had to do the numbers. I had to take the numbers.
But you took them off of the population, population growth by age. And so that's individuals, not households, right?
Right, yes.
Okay, so we have from?
Population.
Okay.
I'm looking at population. And I did the math because I didn't just add those percentages. I did the, I added the categories and I divided them by the previous number. So that's where I get my percentages.
But that's what this is. So the change from when to when, what period are you looking at?
From twenty twenty two to 2027.
Okay, so we've got that.
Okay, so if you look at, oh, wait, that's not that page.
Because that's what we have. We have the change of, we have the number of houses, the people, and then we have the percentage change.
You have the percentage change from, I'm looking at group categories of numbers, not just those five years, but overall. So what I did was, for example, for five to nine, I added, I looked at the difference and the difference is a hundred and seven students. And then I did a hundred and seven students by how many students were enrolled in those age categories. And that was roughly ten percent.
Okay, so.
Sorry, Shirley, I'm not following. Do you mind?
I'm not following either because five to nine. So basically, it's school age children are going to be five to nineteen.
So here.
Right?
In twenty twenty, let me tell you, in 2022, add up five to nineteen.
Okay, yes.
And in 2027, add up five to nineteen.
Okay.
The difference is a hundred and seven students, a decline of a hundred and seven students.
A decline in a hundred and seven students, which makes perfect sense because all of these ages are declining or there's zero.
And then I divided it by the number of twenty students in 2022 to get my ten percent.
So so you're basically saying that in the Cumberland school system today, that if if the school age children declined by the hundred and eight students, it would be a ten percent decline. So so here's the problem. Census data is always lacking, right? These projections are, you know, the 2020 census was done in 2018 and 2029. So it's, census data is not an exact science and, and you, you know, you need to kind of take it, you know, for what it is, that generally, they believe that in the future, the number of school age children is going to decline. And they're probably looking at it because, again, people are marrying later and having less children. So, but if you have, you know, there's no way that these numbers took into account what happened during COVID.
Well, I, that's not my total point. My total point is the fact that there's also a decrease in the number of people forty five to sixty four, which is probably people- People who have been here to educate their kids and then decide to move into an apartment or retire closer to family or for whatever reason.
Or their job changes.
My concern is.
Yeah, they don't want to pay the taxes and they move somewhere cheaper once their kids are out of school.
And I don't care what that is. My concern is in our households' ability to pay their taxes. And then from a sociology point of view, those 45 to 64-year-olds are our highest wage earners in our society.
Absolutely.
And they're the ones who are leaving. So then I wonder.
Right, because they don't have anything other than a single-family home to live in. Maybe you do a townhouse condo, maybe you do a townhouse rental, maybe you do a regular rental.
So we agree.
But yeah, you're losing them because either their, you know, their job is changing, you know, or they're, they don't want to pay, you know, the taxes.
I agree.
It's hard to know.
I think you and I agree on this.
Yeah, that they need a more housing choice.
My concern to bring back to the council is how much tax burden does that place on other individuals who might not be as able to pay their real estate taxes? For example, a family who has borrowed everything, put down every piece of equity they have to buy their homes so that they can educate their kids in Cumberland, and they will have, for every increase in tax, real estate taxes, they will be more stressed.
But whoever's buying their house is going to pay their taxes, so I'm not really sure. If you have a senior tax burden, then a lot of municipalities have a senior tax workoff program so that you could work in the municipality to try and pay for your tax burden.
Well, I think some of these questions are not about the study. They're more about policy, what we want to do at the town, which is obviously not your prerogative here, I guess. Do we have other questions for Lynn before maybe we open it up? I think we've been going about an hour now. Did we want to open it up, Bill, to folks in the audience to ask some questions to Lynn?
Absolutely. Have to go to the mic so people at home can hear.
So if there's anyone that has a comment or a question for Lynn, you're welcome to go to the microphone and ask that question. Also have some food in the back of the room if anybody sees that. Connie, please, if you don't mind just stating your name, that'd be great.
Hi, I'm Connie Bingham, and I have a fairly simple question, and that relates to the decline in, projected decline in school age children. That's not what the school department thinks. And the school department does enrollment projections, which show fairly steady growth. I don't know how they're done. I don't know what the results are. But that's data that should be available.
It is.
To us and should be incorporated into this. It would be more specific to us than general census data is.
I think that's a really good point, yeah.
So that's, it's just a question.
Yeah, I think that's something that Bill has a really good handle on and is a lot closer to than us. As I said, I think that unfortunately, the census is not caught up with all of the movement that happened as a result of COVID.
Anyone else from the audience? If you don't mind just stating your name, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Rick Don, excuse me.
Even though I know you.
Yes. I thought I read in the summary that AMI is 130,000. Am I correct in that? I'm just trying to gauge the difference between 50, 60% of AMI versus 100 or 80 to 120.
So in other words, is the question, is market rate technically at 130% AMI or?
130,000 of household income.
Oh, 130, okay, in terms of dollars.
Yeah.
I think that's correct.
I think it is pretty close to accurate, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, not speaking for the committee, but I think the Affordable Housing Committee was nowhere in the realm of 100 to $150,000 household income range as sort of being the impetus.
Yeah, so median household income according to HUD is 119,500, and that's for the Portland, Maine HUD metro area. So that is basically for a family of four.
Okay.
So that's what the government says median income is considered. Is your question asking, what is the actual median income in Maine, in your community?
Well, where I'm trying to get to is, depending on the ranges that are being proposed, what are we really talking about on the ground? If, because.
Okay, yeah. So the state is saying for your area, median income is 116,000, but the census is reporting that median household income is 138,000. So not a surprise, Cumberland makes more, median income is much higher than the greater Portland area.
So what would, I think the question is like, what would 80 to 120 be in terms of annual salary for that household or annual income for that household? I guess I can do the math as well if I take those.
Um, and.
You said it's 138, is that what you're saying?
For 80, 80% of AMI for a four-person household is 94,600, according to HUD. That's what 80% of median income is. So if you're limiting your units to 60 to 80% of median income, that would be a range of about 70 to 94,000 for a four-person household.
Okay, without getting too far afield, am I generally correct in believing that your findings are that a developer could afford materials and afford to do a 55-unit project for that 80 to 120% range, but that there isn't a demonstrated local need that it could be built or populated locally if we're down in that 40 to 60% range?
So we did not look at construction numbers and we didn't do a development pro forma that, you know, when you do units at 40 to 60% of AMI, you're able to bring in what's called other people's money, tax credits and other state funding incentives. So that typically covers the cost of building. If you're in the 80 to 120% or market, you need to make sure those rents are going to cover your development costs for the unit. I believe that we concluded that for Cumberland alone, there are not enough households at the 40 to 60% of AMI level to fill a building, age restricted or not.
Thank you. Final question for me.
Please, go ahead.
Is that, I think the committee, this is the Affordable Housing Committee that we worked on, I think the committee felt that if we're using other people's money, there was an inherent loss of control, that you essentially couldn't have local preference type options. So I don't know if that's borne out by your experience in evaluating these things or not.
I think it's worth a call to the Maine Housing Authority and see if they have an issue with any kind of a local preference.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Because they're going to be the ones that are going to issue the tax credits. I mean, I think it's the Housing Finance Agency or something like that. Or we can take a look online and see if there's an issue. They usually have something called ANOFA, Notice of Funding Availability, that would sort of lay that out.
That was a problem with Drown Road. We got the 9% LITC credits, which were only four projects in the state given that year, and we were one of them, 9% tax credits. But local preference laws from the developer said they did not exist. What they did is advertise them one to two weeks ahead of time locally, and we sent out mailers to everybody at Drown Road and everybody on the mailing list for those units that were available at Drown Road. And a lot of those people did come off the list, not all of them, but quite a few of them. But it's a very different type of housing. It's a dormitory-style housing at Drown Road versus at Hawthorne Court, it's a garage and it's a kind of single-level living.
Yeah. It's definitely worth asking the agency or the authority whether or not they have any restrictions against you having a percent with a local preference. I think it should, someone should be able to give an answer pretty easily on that. Maybe we can find somebody to email.
And Rick, thank you for all your help on the Affordable Housing Task Force as well. Go ahead, Bob.
I wanted to follow up on the gentleman that just stepped down. You said there was no demand for the 40 to 60 AMI in the community, and something about that just strikes me as being odd, that the buy-in cost of this community excludes that segment. So it's, I don't believe that there's, the demand isn't there. It's how we're playing with the numbers, I guess, if you will. So if you had something that was lower, you might attract a fair amount of people who want to return to this community, i.e. young people starting out, people who've been away. So I wonder how you play with that for a second.
Again, we never said that there isn't, there is no demand. We just said that there's not enough demand. So I just, I want to be very clear about that. And we've also stated that typically, when you build something, you do have people coming from outside the community, which is why we, and we did it two ways with just Cumberland and with the surrounding communities. So normally, if we were doing a study for somebody applying for tax credits, we would basically say that 60 or 80% of the people are going to come from the community, and another 20 or 30 or 40% are going to come from somewhere else. So I agree with you. I think there are people out there that would like to return or be in the community that haven't been counted.
Any other questions from the public? Any other questions from the council? Do you have a question?
I had a question, I can't find it. You said that there were currently 745 family and age-restricted units in the study area. Those are just the towns you looked at, right? Those did not include Gorham or Scarborough or any of the other communities around us?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think the only other question I had is, would we be able to see kind of an updated, and there's a long report, obviously, but to Mike's point earlier about the waiting list, what was the housing unit?
Hawthorne Court.
Hawthorne Courts. Would that, would those numbers integrated in, just to get a sense of where that puts us, knowing that that might be a variable that's skewing what we're seeing?
Liz, did you include them in the demand analysis?
I'll have to, I have to go in and look. I definitely didn't. I don't remember if I put them as market or if I put them as affordable, because they were kind of funky and I was struggling to figure out where they fit in best with our study.
Yeah, no, I'm looking.
We have a waitlist information. We did study the property, so we can make sure to highlight that better in the report because we have it all. We just have to, we have to make it more clear that was on me for not doing that.
No, that's great.
Yeah, no, it looks, it looks like you did Forside Estates, Yarmouth Place, Yarmouth Point, and then it says Badger, Ron Yarmouth Commons Shops at Thelma. Let's see if there's any more. 984 Springfield Depot, Maple Grove, Roosevelt Trail, Roosevelt Trail, Railroad Trail. It doesn't look like they were, but they were age-restricted, right? Hang on, let me just go to the.
Yes.
Okay, so under the age-restricted, it only has six competitive units for the market. I think we, it's possible that they weren't. I'm just going to Cumberland. A lot of charts here. So it doesn't, I don't see them in the Cumberland. So yeah, if we put them into the Cumberland senior, it's going to make the numbers even worse.
Yeah, I think that'd just be helpful to see if, so we're setting the table correctly.
When you say make the numbers worse, what do you mean by that?
Meaning if you put in competitive units, then those are less bodies. So we'll put in, we'll add to the demand the Hawthorne Court for the senior. And we'll make sure that we talk more in our conclusions about the great waitlist that there is there for 120-person waitlist.
Hey Lynn, I have one other question for you as well. We were talking about the 40 to 60% AMI and how that would potentially qualify for, quote, "other people's money," these LITC credits. I know you're not a developer, but are you aware of developments where if you built something at different levels of AMI, you know, certain units are for 40, certain units are for 60, certain units are for 80 to 120? Are developers able to leverage those LITC funds for the portion of the building or a portion of the construction that relates to those eligible 40 to 60% AMI units?
Yeah, really good question.
Or is it like you're one or the other? Like, because I'm wondering.
Yeah, no, we have a project right now in Shrewsbury that has 9% credits, and they're all under 60, and then they've got a layer of 4% credits, and those are 60 to 120. So it's possible that they could mix the two different, so 9% credits, just for you, for your understanding, are very highly competitive, 4% not so much. So it's possible that they could, they could do something with two different types of credits.
Got it. But then also, but then also play in the space where you say, hey, the rest of this building is going to be 80 to 120 AMI, and as a result, we can't take advantage of a credit?
You should be able to do the 4% at least up to 80, I believe.
Okay, that was, that was what I thought initially, too.
Yeah, 4% is going to go up to 80%, and then the 9% is going to go up to 60%. So you may be able to bring some subsidy in for them. I don't think, we have something in Mass, the Commonwealth Builder Program, which is middle income goes from 80 to 120. I don't know that Maine has anything like that, but they should.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, it's called, you know, trying to go after the missing middle.
Yeah, that's exactly the phrase I was thinking, this missing middle, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions from the council? Bob, Bill?
Couple of comments and then maybe asking for some direction. If I look at my community and the greatest perceived needs, or my perceived needs, I guess that I would, I would rank elder care as my number one concern. You know, there's a fair amount of us who say, we're going to stay in our home for as long as we can, and then when that day arrives, there's really no choice for us where to go. We pretty much have to leave the community. And then there's the moral piece that I think is my second area of concern is, and that's providing workforce housing, i.e. diversity in my community. And so I want to make sure that that's addressed. And then the third piece is that we had a challenge by our Greater Portland Council of Governments as to what we could do as a community to provide some housing for immigrant SARC. And, you know, each community, if they took on that little piece, it's not a heavy lift. Is there a way to, is there a way to structure a project that might cover all those three things? In other words, is there a way to write an RFP that, or have you seen something that might address all those things? Or would you just suggest that we pick one and run with it?
You know, I mean, certainly if you don't age-restrict something, you're still going to get older people in it just because of what it is. And it'll be, if, you know, if you're doing a mixture of an elevator building and townhouses, you should be able to hit all of those different populations. So you should be able to hit, you know, families and people that are age-restricted and, you know, hopefully some vouchers. So, you know, you could do a mixture, as I said, of elevator buildings, townhouses. For the immigrant community, they're definitely going to need some level of wraparound services. You know, and it just depends whether they're, the housing, local housing authority or the state has any vouchers for them. And then whether or not there is a not-for-profit action agency or supportive housing services provider that could give them that support so that they can do well in the community. So yeah, I mean, you can put all of those people in, you know, in one building because with elderly, you've got the elevator. You know, with families, maybe you have, you know, two and three-bedroom units and you've got some townhouses. And with the immigrants, it's presumably also the family housing, you know, two and three-bedroom units. But they're going to need the added supportive services end, and that's really not necessarily a housing thing. It's making a relationship with a case management service. So I almost think it's better, you know, I think the model of housing today is to be more inclusive and to not basically isolate people and put them out into their own housing. You know, sometimes, you know, with veterans and stuff like that, having them in their own housing is helpful just because of all the PTSD and military trauma and whatnot. But I don't think you need to have a separate property for immigrants unless, again, there's a particular funding stream that says, if, you know, you're going to build transitional housing. stream that says, if, you know, you're going to build transitional housing for immigrants, then you might, you know, want to have a separate building, because transitional housing is funded just differently than permanent housing. So I almost feel like it's probably a good idea before you RFP, just to get very familiar with what the state would, would, would fund there. I, I don't know if there's somebody, you know, in your committee that could help with that or, or with my help, help with that.
Bill, did you have a comment?
I think, I've, I've talked to Vesta Housing as well as to West, the Westbrook Housing Authority, who was very active in just about all those things that Bob mentioned.
Yeah, Westbrook is all over the place. Yeah.
Right. But I think before we get to that next step, it might be wise to bring one of them in. I think if you recall, the gentleman from Westbrook Housing was phenomenal. I mean, he was ready to go the next day if you gave him the green light. And just to kind of answer those questions, I, I think, rolling into the report Hawthorne Court, it is an anomaly, because it's not quite low income and it's not quite market rate. It's kind of smack in the middle. It's like 50, 56%.
Yeah, and I'm sure you could build it today.
You know, the 50, 60% AMI, which would be really difficult. We were very fortunate to get those units, which are awesome. So from the council's perspective, I really believe that one discussion before the next step might be worthwhile. Just to say, here's where we're at. We're kind of at a crossroad. We, we know we have a demand. We know we have 120 people on our waiting list, but we also have a demand for folks that want to get in this community that can't, or they're leaving this community, that live here now, that live with families and can't afford to stay. So how do we balance those two? And to Bob's point, using what we have for resources locally as part of those additional add-ons, whether it be just wellness checks, the community paramedicine that we're trying to get off the ground at the fire department, all of those things kind of play into what a housing agency can offer to our community. So this is great data, because I think it just gives you the facts of where you are at today, and it's not what we kind of expected. We kind of expected that 60% of AMI was the big need, and it isn't. So how do we get there? And your, your direction, I think, to the Housing Task Force, as well as our staff, was that, you know, we're not going to compete with the regular market. We're not going to complete, you know, compete with the regular housing market. If they can build it at, you know, 100% of median income or 120%, let them build it. Let us deal with the folks that are kind of left behind, you know, similar to what we did at Hawthorne Court, because that really hit a spot. And I think if you look at those two waiting lists, those people are patiently waiting for their turn. Some of them are not quite ready to move yet, so they, they pass when it's their turn. Some of them are ready to go and are waiting for their turn, and there's a, there's a mixture of both on that list. We don't rarely, we rarely get to the everyone else list, I think, Carla. It's Carla's saying never, because by the time we get to that group where anybody can put their name on the list that are just no connections to Cumberland, somebody's already taken that unit. So we've been very successful, and I think our housing authority has done a great job in shepherding that. But we've always shepherded with an eye toward, we don't want to get up to market rate rents, because we don't want to be in the housing business. We want to basically be in the people business to keep me Cumberland residents here. And I think that's been pretty consistent. I think there is a definite need for that, but there's also a definite need for people that want to stay in the community, and there are no homes to own options anymore. So renting may be the only way they can stay in our town. So it's kind of.
Yeah, I mean, you, you do have a lot of land, so even looking at, you know, affordable homeownership could be interesting, too. Now, the townhouses are a different age restricted townhouses that maybe have an affordable component.
Well, are there any other questions from the council? Any other questions from the audience? Okay. Seeing none, I think maybe we let Lynn go on with her evening. And thank you very much for such a detailed report. It's really going to help us drive discussions and kind of figure out what, what works and what doesn't work, maybe in the town of Cumberland. So I'm sure we'll be in contact again soon. But thank you again for your time and for putting this together. We really appreciate it.
You're very welcome. We'll follow up on the few things we talked about and turn that around. Have a great evening. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Bye.
And thank you, Sean, for making this actually work. I'm not sure how that audiovisual works, but it seemed to work fine.
Well, just to let everybody else in the room know that I wasn't here in the beginning when Sean came in, this is being recorded. So we will put a link to this. We'll, we'll work with Sean to get it online, so people can watch it and review it, and we can kind of have it as well for.
There are extra copies of the report.
Yeah, the report will be updated again. So Hawthorne Court is, is an anomaly, and it doesn't quite fit into it. Bob?
Was the fellow from Brunswick Town Planner here?
Matt is in the front row.
I do have a question.
Fire away for Matt. He's, he's a employee now of GP Cog, so we get the knowledge of all the projects he has built. And he's a very knowledgeable gentleman when it comes to some of the things you had to say.
I'm hoping you have some experience back in Brunswick. Some years ago, I visited a cohousing project out, on the outskirts of Brunswick, and I was intrigued by it. It was a mix of single units, duplexes, and triplexes. And I'm wondering if you've got any thoughts on how something like that might be utilized in the town of Cumberland? It's, it's called cohousing.
Yeah, nothing too specific, other than it is an approach. As I was director there, I actually got a couple requests on, or questions about how to go about that. It would be a private endeavor. I don't know, or can't see as right now, where there would be a role for the town. But certainly it does, in certain ways, represent a possibility for cost savings. I think what you'd want to do is maybe approach, and I can't think necessarily offhand, but developers who have experience or existing cohousing as to their formation. I, I think there's certain rules you have to follow through state law as well for cohousing.
I knew you couldn't help yourself.
Yeah, so Christine Egan, and I'm just, I can't speak to the Brunswick project, but I had the opportunity to live in cohousing for a while when I was a young professional. And I just wanted to say, it's not something that's well-understood, I think, in most of the country. It's fairly unique. But I had a fabulous experience there, because what, what happened was there were families that had children, there were older adults, there were different kinds of housing types, so one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. And there was a common house where there was a commercial-like kitchen. And so the way that the community worked, I think there might have been like 20 or 30 units that surrounded a courtyard. Everybody shared the lawnmower. They all had like, you know, some common equipment, so every, every family didn't have to buy their own thing. And then culturally, what happened was that the older people would take care of the kids of the working family adults, and then the working family adults would repay the favor by taking people to medical appointments or helping with things. It was, it was really a great experience. I only lived there for six months as a, as a renter, but it's a, it's a model that I wish more people would explore in Maine.
For people who don't know, that's Christina Egan.
Yeah.
She's Director of GP Cog.
Any other thoughts or questions? I don't want to call this early, but I mean, I feel like we've got some pretty good information from Lynn. And I guess in terms of what our next steps are, is that something we'll be discussing tonight as a council? Or do you feel like this is something we need to schedule another time to kind of digest what we've heard, talk a little bit more, and figure out what potential next steps might be? Bill, do you have comments on that?
I think the study has to somehow include Hawthorne Court, just to show that it's in there, and to show that the need is there for people on, especially our waiting list, because I think that has to kind of be factored into this a little bit. But then, how do you factor the rest of the folks? Because initially, we talked about having that transitional housing, which was, would be rented, maybe at the six or 12 units that would be rented at full market rate when we didn't need them, and then be able to use basically general assistance funds when it, when there was, you know, a need for regional housing for, as Bob mentioned, asylum seekers or immigrants or, or whatever. So that was, that wasn't really factored in, and it really is hard to factor in this report. But that was the direction that I felt I was going away with when I kind of just put together a concept plan. It was totally a concept. What I think Lynn provided to you, she's basically said it's not going to be two buildings. It really is going to be some combination of townhouses and, and potentially another building. But another building at 50, 60 AMI next to a 50, 60 AMI building that's having trouble filling it is not what we wanted to do. We really want to take care of people in our community first, and then everyone else will eventually fill in. So for, for me, I think the gentleman who brought the most to the table during our interviews over the last two years was the gentleman from Westbrook Housing. And he just had a lot of good ideas, and they had so many different types of housing units. He could maybe take this report and say, okay, here's what I would do. And not tip his hand, because he's called me and said, we are definitely interested in an RFP if you're ready to go. And I said, we've got to figure out what we want to do first. And I think we won't know what we want to do until you get some more questions answered.
Yep.
You know, how do we balance the senior when you're trying to do no age restricted? The apartments down on Route 1, they have a higher percentage of senior occupancy than is required by our, by our contract zone agreement with them, which is great. But, you know, do we want to guarantee a minimum so that at least the senior population would be incorporated?
We do have a guaranteed minimum.
Down on, yes, but in any future housing project.
Oh, I get it. Okay.
Because the recommendation was not to have an age restriction in there, but maybe a minimum would not be a bad thing to do.
We had a minimum on other ones, like Guedes, we had a minimum.
We did, we did.
And on David Swans, we had a minimum.
Yeah, we always, so it isn't something we haven't done in the past.
It's not new.
There was no, there was not any on David Swans.
Yes, there were two.
Yes, there was. Yep.
Rick Wardley was a partner on that.
I was on the council.
And he said there was not.
No, we have a contract zone agreement with David Swans.
55-plus, but there was no income.
Oh, no. But there was an age requirement.
Right, that was it. That was the requirement.
We haven't done income requirements on anything other than.
There, there is still on the contract zone, but I think if you remember that when they tried to sell one of the first units, it came back to the council to get modified because it just wasn't possible to sell those units. And it.
Well, and that's what I want. I, I think I've, can I?
Please, of course.
I think I'd like a little bit more information, too. Like, I don't want to be stuck with a bunch of units we can't fill.
Exactly.
Because, you know, he, they looked at Yarmouth and Falmouth. Those are both on bus lines. They both have diverse tax bases. They, you know, they have more businesses to support, more services for, for their residents. But there's an awful lot being built. You go to Brunswick, and there's tons of stuff being built. Kevin Bunker's up there going crazy. He's all over the place. He might be someone we bring in again. I know he.
Yeah, he was on my list.
I know you thought we scared him away, but.
Yeah. You, you brought him back.
I told Christina how impressed I was when he spoke at the GP Cog Summit. There's tons of stuff going on in Scarborough. We haven't heard about Gorham. I mean, there's just, I don't want to be four to five down, years down the road when all of these units all of a sudden become available and not be able to, to fill ours. And I'd also like some real numbers. I, I'd like, I'd like the school's response to the census.
Their, their data is not what the census is.
I know.
Not even close. It's absolutely the opposite direction. They're projecting 2,500 students in the next 10, within the next 10 years. So, and we're at just over 21 right now.
So maybe they're coming from North Yarmouth, and if so, we need to be.
Aware of that as well.
Bill, what's the footprint over here? How many Hawthorne Court buildings could we put in that footprint?
30. Anyway.
How many?
We could do another Hawthorne Court in that footprint over here. Maybe even more, maybe closer to 45.
You know, I, I said to you guys months ago, you know, I, you could bring me on board. And I really think if you, if you focused on our seniors, the people on the waiting list with a Hawthorne Court style thing, you got me on board.
Can we build it, though? Can we afford it?
Well, we wouldn't be, just to be clear, we're not building anything. Like, we, we don't build.
Right.
But, but.
Thank you for clearing.
Yeah, no, that's good. I mean, you have a question? Please, go ahead.
Well, I have a couple of comments.
Okay, sure. Yeah, do you mind stepping up to the microphone? Sure.
Can you mention your name? Nobody knows who you are.
Yeah, no, we don't know you.
Terry Maloney Kelly. So interesting data. I feel our town has a duty to our seniors. That waiting list, you've come here. I know why you want your friends to come here. I get it. But we have folks, we are folks that have built what we have, and we need to really, I think that really needs to be, we've done well bringing everybody else into our community, but that has caused a situation why we're talking about this topic tonight. So I really feel that our focus needs to be on the folks that are here, that might want to move. I, I'm like Shirley. I can't afford the rents. I can't afford to go rent someplace. I'll be better off staying in my home and even hiring services before I go and rent at least a two-bedroom. Who's going to move from a house to a one-bedroom unit? Not most folks unless they have to. So I have a family member who's at Hawthorne Court. She could never afford market value, but she's lived in this town her whole life. She had lost her house because she got a divorce and couldn't afford to stay in the house. So she got lucky. But I really think that's who you're, I, I get confused about who your audience is. Who is your customer? Who is your customer? I think our first customer needs to be the citizens that live here. We've created a community that has outgrown us, but we still have value, a lot of value. We need to be up there with the conversation. And I've just, I really also questioned the rental numbers that they showed in the report, because, you know, I was at an all-class reunion a couple of weekends ago, and of course, I always chat with everybody, and I always ask them, where are you living? Well, we still have our house in Cumberland, but we moved to Wyndham, and we moved to Gray, and we moved to, because they can rent their house in Cumberland and pay for their rent someplace else. So I really, the whole transient nature, nature of our community, I feel, has just grown, aside from just being people putting their kids through our school system. We're a great place to make some money if you have a house. I mean, if I wanted to do it, but I have too much family here, I'm not going anywhere. So I'm going to advocate for, you know, some balance here. So I just ask you to consider that. I also think about a four-story building in the center of town. I mean, I'm sorry. I mean, it'd be better off in the chase pit at least, you know. I, I just, I just, I don't know. I, I just think that I really need to ask you folks to really, really think about the folks who are here that are in their 50s and 60s now, that still, probably want to still, if they're, if they're in their 50s, their kids have gone through school, they're here in the community. So they're, you know, most likely staying. We need to think about them, too. We need to think about their ability to stay here. So with a public housing project, my other question is, as a citizen, what's in it for me other than higher taxes? Aside from the school piece, the municipal side, what's in it for me? So I just really, I know it's really a big issue, but I just am pleading with you to really think about Cumberland, the past, the past, so that we can be that diverse community, because we are becoming very undiverse. So I don't know how you balance it, but I really need to ask that you consider perhaps some different alternatives. And, and all of these numbers that are in this study, we know Cumberland's unique. I mean, in both ways. So I just, you know, need to ask you to think about the folks in our community that are 55 or even 50 and above, because, you know, they're still here. You know, they're probably still here because it's, they could have sold out by now, right? This is the time. They should have done it the past five years. They haven't. So you need to think about them and their future as well, and their ability to stay here, so that they can say that, you know, I grew up in Cumberland, I lived in Cumberland, and I died in Cumberland, and I would love to go to an assisted living or a place. I mean, that's what I said about the chase pit. Make that, you know, a community where you can just move around. So my thoughts. Thank you. You guys are always listening.
Yeah, thank you, Terry.
I want to piggyback on, on Terry's comments, too, because when, sometimes when people ask, what's in it for, for us, what's in it for me, other than higher taxes, sometimes the answers we get are, well, your house is worth more. And I just want to remind everybody that your house is only worth more if you choose to sell it. Some people don't want to sell their homes. It's only worth money if you want to sell it. It's like having antique longer burger baskets. They would only be worth money if I wanted to sell them. Instead, I use them and get them dirty and bring the vegetables in and, you know, so. Connie has a comment. Connie has a comment.
Please, Connie.
Oh, I have spoke, I have, Connie Bingham again. I've spoken briefly once already, so someone who has not spoken wants to speak, go ahead. But I would like to maybe broaden, take what's in it for me, which initially doesn't turn me on, but broaden it a bit. And here we are. Our kids grew up in Cumberland. One of our grandchildren just graduated from Greeley. Our son works for the town. He could not buy a house in Cumberland today. Uh, I don't know how many teachers and town employees and what we would consider workforce in terms of people who serve us all with, with good, meaningful jobs. How many of those there are who would like to, to move to Cumberland? And to me, a teacher in the high school, uh, who's not married to someone who makes a lot more money, that person is part of Cumberland, too. My kids are part of Cumberland. Now, our, our grandchild thinks she's going off to college, but she doesn't think she can really afford to live here. So if we could take that concept of who we are and broaden it from those of us who are well into retirement age, and look at all of those that we care about, uh, and even though I personally would put in a plug for asylum seekers, I'm not doing that tonight. That's a different issue. So I'm probably kind of more towards where Bob Vail is on, in terms of what we've always called workforce housing, fam, fam, bringing people back.
Thank you, Connie. And I think, Bob, go ahead, please.
So, I think where we're here this evening, we can look over the last two years. Uh, I spent 15 years on the school board, and I told my wife, I said, I will not advocate for our children. That's your job. My job is to advocate for everyone, so, uh, what's in it for me may not be anything for me. What's in it is what is best for the community.
Well, I was just using myself as an example.
Let me finish, let me finish. I think that, uh, and I said this before, we're looking at an opportunity. We have the ability to sit down and, and meet with a couple of people, somebody from Avester, somebody from, uh, Westbrook, and we can, we can formulate an RFP to our liking. And, uh, you know, and I'm looking forward to that because I think it, you know, one, we can get Mike engaged and, and find something that, that he can, that he can find out that, hey, I can get behind this, I can support this. And, you know, I'm, I'm pretty sure that we're not all gonna get what we want, but we all may get something that we can say, this will make our community a better place. And, uh, I've advocated for end-of-life, uh, a, um, something in this community for nursing care, something like that. I'm probably not gonna get that. I may not ever see that, but I won't stop advocating for that because I feel strongly about that, that, you know, we need a place for people to...
Well, and I think...
...spend the rest of their life in their community. On the same thing, uh, we talked about some emergency housing, you know, and what that might look like, you know, and having half a dozen units for someone who, who is misplaced, displaced, uh, has a, a, a fire in their home and they need someplace to go for six to nine months or whatever. Uh, so those, those are needs that, that need to be, uh, part of the conversation. Uh, workforce housing, as Connie points out, you know, her, her son can't afford, uh, you know, uh, my, my son and daughter probably have an equal time, a difficult time of moving back into this community. So, uh, we, we, we have an opportunity, and I can't say that word loudly and clearly, we have an opportunity to, uh, do something different. We don't have to say, well, uh, we're building housing in Brunswick, Cape Elizabeth, Scarborough, all around us. I, I think that the, the scale of which we do something is not gonna affect anything but what we can do for our own community. So, I, I think we really need to focus on, uh, hearing from some outside experts, making some decisions amongst ourselves. I, I think that RFP is, is, I, I think we're gonna achieve something that's of singular importance for this community.
Yeah, and on, on the RFP side of things, I think it's important to, to point out that we don't have to accept an RFP if it doesn't feel like it fits our community and what our needs are, right? If we, if we get something and we feel like seniors, as Terry mentioned, are getting, getting cut out, that's not something we need to accept, right? And so I think, for me, visualizing what that space looks like, which types of units we have, a mixture of them, what types of families at different income levels can be there. I, I personally don't see something that's just all seniors. I also don't view something that's all families. And so I think it's gonna be a mixture of some of those things to really meet the needs and hit the notes at, at all the different income levels that we need to for our town. Because if we want it to be diverse, we have to make it diverse. Because my bigger concern is also, if you do create something that's just for seniors, and some of those seniors leave their homes and they move into this facility, that's, that's wonderful, but now you've just opened up whatever the number is of homes that are probably gonna be filled with families, with kids going to school. And so, it's this balance of how do you hit those notes all the way through to make sure you're not exacerbating another issue by solving one, right? It's a little bit of whack-a-mole, but, um, I think, I think we can try to strike that balance.
Bob, I do think that the table or the data in the report supports your assisted living, and I'm 100% behind you in that regard. Um, that, there was a particular table that mentioned how many people reported being disabled at certain ages. And that is a whole different type of housing that needs to be available for them, whether it's, you know, kitchenettes where they can prepare two meals a day and then have a joint meal together, and then, whatever that looks like, I, I see the data there that supports that.
Terry, Terry, please, go ahead.
So, so, thank you. I've had this thought for a while because I, as Mr. Manager will know, um, I've been really disappointed in our activity in assisting with the asylum seekers for at least the past five years. Let's face it, our community presents a lot of challenges for them. I mean, the whole transportation and just not able to access services in itself. So here's a question, now that I know someone from Cog is here. Is there discussion? I mean, we're not a unique community. Falmouth, Yarmouth, Cape Elizabeth. Is there discussion about communities coming together that cannot really, realistically, affordably create housing? That they could come together as a community and find a place that we can participate and provide them with housing and a community? That we're not spending millions of dollars ourselves doing, but being a participant in a group effort? So, I, I keep thinking of ways, be, because the burden, it spreads the burden, and honestly, I mean, I'm, I've been, I've been involved with the asylum families, and they're their own community, honestly. I mean, they do need to have their support with their community because our community is so different from where they came from. Even just, you know, cooking food. So, I, I just don't know if that's a concept that has been considered or could be considered amongst communities like us trying to do the right thing, but it's really a big nut to crack. Just a thought.
Do you have comments on that? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but...
Thanks for the question.
Just reading.
Yeah.
Uh, yes, it is a huge nut to crack. Huge nut to crack. And, um, there has been a lot of activity that we've been working with many partners on, and it is a challenge to serve asylum seekers in a dispersed and suburban environment. And yet, these folks are gonna be the future, um, part of the future of the workforce, and so they'll eventually integrate into many communities. At this moment, they have intense needs that require centralized services, like English language learning, um, some workforce training, things like that. So I think there'll always be opportunities for Cumberland to welcome asylum seekers and families, and especially after they get their work permits. That's gonna make it easier, and then they can start to afford a car, particularly because Cumberland is not served by public transportation. If I could just indulge everyone for just a moment with a, or indulge myself, I should say. Um, there are few things that communities are doing to pull together. Uh, one of them is we've launched Safe in Maine, which is a fund that, um, Falmouth is actually considering contributing tonight, and Westbrook, Cape Elizabeth, oh, I shouldn't have started naming all of the communities, Scarborough. And we've raised over $190,000 already with municipal contributions to help with a centralized campus of transitional housing that we've proposed for Unity College. You've probably seen it in the headlines. It really could go anywhere where there were empty dorms or other kinds of housing and would allow for that centralized provision of services. So we're really proud of that. And then also, you may have seen the headlines this last week, we worked with the city of Portland and the Quality Housing Coalition to relaunch something like host homes. Many of you were participating. That Cumberland was like a superstar in 2019 in welcoming families to your, to your area. We've made it better. It's now something where landlords can get reimbursed for hosting asylum seekers. So I, uh, I'm just announcing that for any residents who've been involved in host homes in the past, there's now a new way to go about it, um, that actually allows the host to be compensated. So you can go to qualityhousingcoalition.org to get more information on that. So there's a lot of community support that's happening in many different ways over time.
Safeinmaineisat.org, too.
Thank you, Shirley, yes. Sorry, counselor. Um, and if I could take a moment, Chair Seagrist, I just wanted to offer just a contextual, um, comment about this decision that you have in front of you about a particular parcel with a particular RFP. This region needs so much housing. Matt on our team has done a preliminary analysis of the kind of 30 cities and towns that GP Cog serves. We need 24,000 units by 2030. It's an enormous, and that's to match the jobs that are created in this area. It is a tremendous challenge for this region to, um, fill, and I just commend all of you for grappling with this, for having an affordable housing committee, for thinking about land and how you can play a role in it. I'll just say that, um, we hear, you know, seniors need housing, they absolutely do. Workforce needs housing, they absolutely do. People that are low-income need housing, they absolutely do. People with disabilities, veterans, it is across the board, this need. And as you're thinking about the project, you may decide to hone in on one or two, but really, when you look at some of the literature around this, when you mix people of different ages, you mix different sizes, it creates kind of a more natural ecosystem where people are all working together and, and helping one another, really having that helpful community. So you can consider that also as you're thinking about it. You know, I think, Bob, you were talking about kind of mixing it together, or maybe you segregate some populations or others, you give some local preference, or you have some set aside that's for your seniors. And I absolutely agree with, what is your name again? Terry, that, um, our seniors have built our communities, and they can get priced out by property taxes. And making sure that those people can stay in your community, it's, it's something all of us in Maine really care about. And at the same time, you've got to understand, are your EMS workers, do they live an hour away? What happens if you get flooded and they can't get here? What about your teachers? Right? What about the kids that want to move back? So there is just so much need, and anything that you can put on the market is gonna help. So I just want to congratulate you so much for having this conversation, and just let you know that you're part of a much bigger conversation that's happening around the region. We're, and we're encouraging every city and town to do their part, and also to think about, when you locate the housing, do it in a way that's more compact because it will save your taxpayers' money over time. So think about kind of your villages and your growth areas as the best places because that will really reduce the transportation. It's great for climate, and it's really good for the municipal taxpayer. Thanks.
Just circling back to when you stepped up here earlier, what was the community you were referencing you lived in for six months?
Oh, it was actually Sacramento, California.
Okay.
Yeah.
What was the...
What was the, um, gosh, the name of it, right?
Ten-minute recess.
I'll have to look it up.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't remember. Yeah, there is co-housing actually in other New England states, too. I've visited a few of them. There's like some really rural ones where, instead of being kind of, I was in an urban, more an urban area, but there are some rural ones where it's like farmland that's actually shared. And, um, people are growing crops together, you know, raising their kids together in that kind of environment. And, um, I visited one in Vermont that was just stunningly beautiful, bucolic.
Great. Well, on that note, I think what we will do is probably give us all a 10-minute recess before we start our council meeting. Thank you, everyone from the public for participating, and thank you for everyone on the council for doing the same. Take a recess.